And we have a lot of ground to cover today. And it also looks like we have a lot of interested folks observing today, too, who may want to take the opportunity to speak if we do have that opportunity at the end of our presentation. And it's my hope that we will. I think we'll go ahead and get started. And is Ms. Driscoll available? Or will you be starting us off, Mr. Skryg? And I think you're muted.
Maybe for a good reason.
Yeah.
We were having a side conversation while muted, trying to deal with YouTube technical difficulties. So I think she'll be joining us shortly.
Okay. Fantastic. And I do just want to say that for all the interested parties that want to share their perspectives, and I know there are some perspectives we definitely need to hear from. And I want to thank the people that did reach out to us. If we don't get to all of you today, I just want to encourage you to email thecitycommission@celina.org. And not only will all commissioners receive a copy of your email, but city staff will as well. So that's the best way to ensure that we are all hearing from you, just in case we don't have that opportunity to get to everyone in their entirety today and that everyone doesn't get a chance to fully share their points of view. I think that's all I got.
Commissioner Hodges, before the city manager and Lauren log in, this is Brad Anderson. I'm running point on the guests that are in the room. And so if you do have time or want to hear, because of this number, it'll take me just a little bit to cycle through and make sure that you're aware of anyone who has a question. So I'll do my best to keep up with that and let you know if time allows.
Sounds good. And for those of you who are familiar with Zoom meetings there, you may raise your hand virtually. You can send a message to the host if you're so inclined and would like to speak. Or if all else fails and you're willing to use your camera, you can just flag us down and we'll make sure that you're unmuted and can participate.
So I still, like I said, I got off the phone with Lauren. I expect she'll be joining any moment, but I don't see her. Do you, Brad?
No, she is on her way getting logged in to her office right now.
Okay.
Is there anything else that we need to cover before we start, Mike?
I know that Lauren has a slide presentation of the points that you were making about how to raise your hand digitally. So that'll be one of the first things we want to cover, but I think that's it. I can give a little bit of an overview, just in terms of this is an initial study session intended to address the housing demand that has heightened because of our economic development success. Lauren's got a detailed presentation in terms of some of the employment numbers, as well as what we've done in the way of a housing study and what we can do going forward. But I don't really want to steal her thunder or duplicate. I guess we just kind of need to stand by while she gets logged on.
Sounds good.
Here she comes.
Well, and again, I would like to welcome business owners. Salina Community Economic Development Organization Executive Director Mitch Robinson. I think I saw Chamber of Commerce Eric Brown. County Administrator Phil Smith Haynes. Salina Airport Authority Tim Rogers. And I think I may have even seen former Chamber Director Dennis Lawver there for a minute. I don't know if he's remained on the line with us. But I see that Lauren is up and available, and I will turn it over to her.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
I can.
Yep.
Advanced technical difficulties. All right, this is not making it easy for me to hear you guys.
Do we need to do any kind of audio test? Can you hear us?
There we go. I can. Hold on one second. Sorry, I'm actually going through my virtual, because I need to screen share. So it's not quite as snazzy as going through the app.
I got you.
As we can tell. I know technology is supposed to make our lives easier, but...
Only when it works.
Very questionable. All right. Let's try this now. I'm going to try and share my screen so we can get the presentation started. Hey. Presentation should be up. Is it showing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, Madam Mayor, thank you for your patience, commissioners. Today, we are going to talk a little bit about the LIFT Salina Plan and some activities related to updating that plan. But really, one of the things we're talking about is housing in general. And definitely, I think, community-wise, recognize need for additional housing, particularly kind of what we call middle housing or workforce housing. So just to kind of cap, what we hope to get through today is just touching on some of the recent economic development projects and their impacts on our community's housing. And then the private sector's response to that demand for housing. And then going into a brief description of the scope and timeline related to the update of the LIFT Salina Plan. Ideally, part of this study session is the city commission having a discussion about what more information do we need? Further conversations we need to have as a community? Additional information and policy decisions, of course. So we have a lot going on, both now and for the next few years. As many of you know, we...
Losing your...
Yeah.
Breaking up.
Yeah.
Does that seem better?
Yes.
Is that better?
Yes.
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 Okay. So One Vision has 75 current open positions. And then they're recognizing in the next couple of years, they're going to be adding 200 new jobs. The average wage for those positions is $25 an hour. Schwan's also has vacant positions of 115 current open positions with 225 new jobs coming. And that's $62,210 on average a year, or $31.35 an hour. Great Plains Manufacturing with 45 current open positions, adding by 2025, 410 additional positions, and then 200 additional positions on top of that by 2030. Salina Downtown and all the new investment in downtown has indicated from their study in 2018 of adding 263 new jobs of various levels. And then the Chamber of Commerce noted that there is over 1,139 positions representing 384 employees in Celine County that have vacancies. And I think probably the number that's easiest to understand in kind of talking with the chamber and looking at other demographics related specifically to job availability is focusing on the number of 900 quality wage jobs being here in our community in the next three years. And that's a fairly significant number. And I think having that one and understanding gives us some kind of idea of the timeline there. I think it's also worth noting that in December, our unemployment rate was only 3.4%. Why that's significant is that these jobs that we're talking about, these 900 jobs in the next three years, are not coming from within the community. Some of them may be filled like that, but we are definitely going to have people coming from outside the community to fill these positions. So knowing that when they come into our community, we're going to need housing for them. So where will these new employees live? Our current housing plan, the LIFT Salina Plan, was finished in 2016. And just looking at some of those projections, the table you see on the screen talks about the different types of housing products, price points, and then breaks that into an increment of 2015 to 2020, and then 2020 to 2025, of the number of houses that we really needed to be bringing into the market to meet the half percent growth rate that the study predicted. That does not take into account the new jobs that have been brought forward by the new economic development project. So that 5% growth rate is probably a little bit higher. So these numbers would actually end up being higher in the long run. And that's part of updating the plan that we'll talk about in a few slides. But I do think it's interesting, we pulled just some really rough demographics. Since 2015, looking at building permits alone, we have less than 350 new housing units total. So that's single-family, that's apartment, that's duplex, if it's a housing unit, that's in that less than 350 number. Of those, 103 were non-single-family residential, meaning not a standalone house. They may have had a shared wall, they may be a duplex, triplex, apartments, whatever. Specifically speaking of apartments, though, we do know of an apartment complex, like a larger number of units, we only have two apartment complexes completed since 2015, and those totaled 64 units. One is Willow Grove, which is senior living at 48 units. And then the other is Heritage Hawthorne, which, that was that second phase with 16 units, and that's Lytech. And the reason I highlight senior and Lytech means that those have a restriction on the types of individuals that can live there. In one case, age restriction, and the other, an income restriction. So private sector response to our housing demand. We have gotten several calls in the last six to eight months. I have my count between myself and the city manager is at seven inquiries since August. And one of them of the seven is shovel-ready. Another one has very strong leads, practice concepts, site selected. And why I highlight those things is if you're still trying to figure out where you want to be and you've never built this product before, that's a lot different than you've done this multiple times and you have an idea of a site, you know if you've got utilities, things like that. And then there's shovel-ready. You're simply waiting to go through the process, ready to build. Five others were just general concepts and have done something like this somewhere else, but were maybe looking at a new product or weren't as familiar with our market. There were some very interesting similarities to the projects and the requests and the questions that we got. Those being all of them asking for economic incentives for housing. All of them were market rate. We had no income subsidized housing at all in these requests. These were all market rate. And in general, we're responding to the increase in jobs that they've been seeing in our community or know about through media. These were rentals. None looking to develop in the NRP or the SRA area, which are two areas designated where we have economic incentives for housing. Most were looking at South Salina locations, looking for visibility from the highway, larger lots and near employers. They were having challenged finding large enough properties to develop on. And this is actually something I've heard for the last few years, is if you're looking to do a larger development, needing a couple of acres, it's harder to find that in fill, of course. And then a lot of the phrase that we heard was making the map work. And that kind of went along with the economic incentives category. I think one of the things that's kind of changed in the last couple of years, and it's very notable in our situation right now, is cost of construction. Thanks to the fires on the west, timber has skyrocketed cost-wise. So lumber for framing and everything else in between has gotten very expensive. And projects that were already, we're already a very tight profit margin, have, the math doesn't work out anymore with some of the timber prices that we've seen. And that's happened really quite recently, and from what we're hearing from the builders, happened almost overnight. We've heard that both from local developers and from developers outside of our community. Other challenges to making the math work is our location not being in a large metro area. Bringing supplies from a major metro area, bringing building teams from a major metro area are part of the challenges. So if you're going to do a large project, how do you do that? Some of the differences we saw in the inquiries were some were apartments, some were townhomes, projects along those lines. Economic incentives, so market rate plus private sector plus residential development, that sounds kind of a lot that we're laying on top of each other. But that's, in that whole middle housing sector, those three things are really what we're talking about at the moment. So market rate means anybody can live there. When we talk about our current housing stock for kind of that middle category, particularly in rental, the majority of our apartment units are Lytech, which means they're low-income housing tax credit properties. And there is an income subsidy requirement there. So if you make more than the calculation for the median income for low to moderate, you can't live there. So generally, if you're making more than $40,000 a year, you won't be able to get or qualify for one of these apartments, not to mention the majority of them are full. The other thing is that there's a senior restriction, and you're generally 55 and older than you would not be able to be in some of those apartments either. So market rate means no matter what you're making, you can get in there. Private sector means it's not the city running the project, it's not Salina Housing Authority running the project, it's a private developer and property manager that's doing that. And then residential, the projects that we're talking about are solely residential, not mixed with any commercial. Economic incentives we have for that type of a development within the community include our CID, the Community Improvement District, the NRP or Neighborhood Revitalization Program, and the SRA, Special Redevelopment Area. There are some incentives through the LIFT, or through the Salina 2020 program that's dealing with a star bond downtown. And I know the chamber and the EDO have done some work over the years trying to address residential, but currently have no economic incentive programs specifically for residential. I'm going to kind of spare everybody getting into the significant details related to each of these incentives. But what I do think it's worth noting is that we do have these incentives on the books. That means that we have policy, we have process, and we have application if you have the right candidate to be able to use these economic incentives. The NRP and the SRA are most notable because they're very geographically defined. Those areas are on the map. And I suppose you could say the same thing about the CID, because residential improvements through the CID should ideally happen in the areas of change. So in addition to those geographical restrictions, then there's additional restrictions within each of those about the value of the building, size of the building, and then what that economic incentive coming back is. And then in the presentation have just highlighted, this first map is the area of change, area of stability. This comes out of the city's comprehensive plan. But the CID specifically highlights a desire to have projects in that area of change. And then we're looking at the NRA map, and you can see here there's NRA B and NRA A, and how that works, and that is part of the Neighborhood Revitalization Program. And then lastly, the Special Redevelopment Area is highlighted here, is the third map. So one of the things that we've heard in conjunction with, here's our project, we need economic incentives, is we've heard from citizens, we've heard from employers, and probably everybody in between, is that the city needs to do something. I think that's part of what's led to this discussion and led to an update of the LIFT Salina Plan is I think we all recognize that there is an issue, and we are excited to have these new employees coming to our community. But what are the policy decisions related to that? And I've just highlighted some things here to start thinking about. I think the first question that comes to everybody's mind is what is the city's role and responsibility in regards to private sector housing? And I bring this up just because we've had, just in the last week or so, a couple news articles come out, and that's the first question that's been asked. And the response that the city's given is, I think we've been in a wait-and-see mode. And it's not normal, normal is kind of a funny word, it's just not typical that government steps in to subsidize private housing. But I also think the role of government and housing, in just even doing research in the last couple of years, has really changed even that notion. And in just starting to talk to some of our neighbors and other good examples, and Marty's definitely helping us with that as we update the LIFT Salina Plan, we're seeing that many communities are starting to look at housing as infrastructure. And that the same way you got to keep streets around, and the same way you got to keep the lights on, and looking at those things, you've got to look at housing. So, you know, that may be a paradigm shift in local government these days, is how is housing looked at? So definitely part of that policy discussion, I think, we're going to be having. What is the city already doing is a good question. As we talked about a couple of slides ago, we do have some economic incentive programs that do encourage residential construction in certain areas of our community. Is that enough? Is it working? And what could the city do? Do we need to give incentives? If so, what kind? Not all incentives are created equal. You can abate property tax. Some communities give away a chunk of land and say, hey, whoever can do the best thing that we want with this, we'll give you the land. Is that a cost, is that part of the cost prohibitive issue with your project? Sometimes it's waiving fees, you know, not charging the building permit or other fees associated, or it's dealing with infrastructure, you know, the cost of getting water and sewer out there. Maybe the municipality takes care of that cost, because that helps to financially balance out the equation. With each of these, there is a financial effect on the municipality. So what is that? And what can we bear? And when can we bear that cost? What exactly do we want to incentivize? Is it all housing, any housing, some housing, rental owner? What does that look like? And what can we do now? What can we do later? And what do we need to prepare ourselves for? As part of this discussion, we really need to update the LIFT Salina Plan. The data is old. And I think with all the discussion that we're having right now, having good data in front of you and preparing for what is probably a long-term conversation is very helpful. I will, I will take this opportunity to say, the update of the LIFT Salina Plan is not meant to hold the commission up or say, hey, don't make any decisions until we finish this. That's always in your purview. We are trying to move this along as quickly as possible. We started in January, and we'll be finished in about four months. And we'll lay out kind of that timeline here in the next couple of slides. But that's pretty fast to update a plan. And I think the results of the LIFT Salina Plan update are meant to be part of a long-term conversation. Even if we approve one or two projects, that's still not enough units for what needs to be many units and many different types of units. Something we're going to talk about in the next couple of slides is housing products. You could build the biggest apartment tower out there and put all the units you needed in it. That doesn't mean that everybody who's coming to our community wants to live in that apartment tower. You know, we need some apartment complexes, we need some townhomes, we need some duplexes, we need what we call like cottage courtyards. We need a lot of different kinds of products, and some people may want to own, some people may want to buy. So some people may want to have a garden and maintain their own yard. Some people do not want to maintain their yard and need to live someplace, but that's an option. that's an option. So with all these different people, we need to have the different types of housing options that suit them. So we're probably going to have to look at several things over the next few years. So as part of this project, task one, which is currently happening right now and actually just pretty much we're moving into phase two at the moment, is just doing a demographic update. And that's assembling all the development data we can get our hands on, scrubbing our data, scrubbing the county's data, looking at national data, and particularly data that was already highlighted in the LIVS Salina Plan. So we take twenty sixteen numbers and we make them twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one numbers. And then taking some of our projections and calculations that were in the plan and updating those. So those projections are reflected, especially of the new employer, um, basically the expansion, the economic development expansion, the number of new employees we have coming. So task two, which we, which we're moving into right now is that rental housing analysis. And that's identifying particularly how many housing complexes we have constructed here in Salina since nineteen ninety. So that's going back a little bit farther than my analysis that I had on slide two or something where I was just looking at what we've done since twenty fifteen. This is going to go back a little farther. Um, but looking at that, trying to see how many larger apartment complexes have we had in our community in that time? And identifying, um, did we incentivize all those, some of those? And if we did, how did we incentivize them? Or if it wasn't us, was there a state program involved? Just looking at kind of our legacy and our relationship with incentivizing housing. And then I think one of the ones that's going to be the most interesting and kind of leads into some of the other analysis we're going to be doing is looking at our peer communities, looking at other communities that have had an insurg- uh, a surge in new jobs, looking at communities that have similar geographical restrictions to ours, um, similar existing economic conditions, and seeing where and how they've dealt with their housing needs and if there are incentives in those communities, whether it's part of a toolbox already established or is it on one-on-one basis, project by project? And what is that tool doing? Is it tax abatement or something else? So as we move into March and April, we're taking the data that's been acquired in January and February and starting to look at and taking feedback from all of you on what are the criteria and goals really worthy of incentives? Um, right now, our incentives are kind of set up to focus on geography. Is there, um, guidelines even for the types of housing we're looking for, uh, the types of amenities, the types of price points, all those different things? And then based on that criteria, goals, guidelines, identifying the types of candidate projects we'd like to see and using those as test subjects to, uh, try out some of the incentives, taking some of those test subjects and saying, okay, based on the kinds of things we're seeing, we may need fifty pound houses. What does that look like? What is that, um, what's the perform on something like that? And where is the economic gap? You know, if the developer, development community is saying, hey, we can't have this pencil out, why can't we see it pencil out? Where, where is that cost issue coming in at? And then taking some of these economic incentives we're discussing and actually testing them to those theories. In task four, we kind of continue that calculation into the financial gaps and really bringing back to the commission those tested incentives into those different types of projects and getting your feedback on what's, what, what seems like it's going to work for our community and really building a toolbox so that as these incentive or incentive requests come in for different types of residential construction, of course, taking those each on their own merit, because each project's going to be different, but giving you ideally a toolbox of different types of incentives to apply as you see, see fit to those different types of projects, knowing though that those projects are meeting some established guidelines and having an idea of how those economic incentives will both fiscally impact the city, the community, and also create really the housing, the insurg- the, the additional housing units that we need. So with that, I know there's probably quite a few questions and I tried to keep that brief, but there's a lot of information out there and I have a feeling we have probably a lot of different people who want to speak on this topic. I saw a lot of people on the screen. So, Mayor, I yield, and if you have any questions, I am happy to answer them.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rascal. I really appreciate the, uh, the information. I think I'll turn first to, um, the city commission. Are there any questions from commissioners? Um, any further items that we'd like to discuss within Ms. Rascal's presentation?
Is the shovel-ready project, this is Commissioner Ryan here, and strong leads ones, the others, are they apartments, townhomes, homes? What type of housing is, um, you know, on the deck, ready to go?
Those are, uh, they are apartments.
Okay.
They're apartments and the unit numbers we were given in that were, were between a hundred and a hundred and fifty units, possibly more. But those were some of the numbers that were put out.
And that would be our greatest need in the shortest term? If we've got a thousand-
I mean, kind of looking at the scenario-
Jobs.
It, I think, I, I, I'm a long-term planner by nature. And I think you're, it would seem logical to look at some projects that will kind of alleviate the immediate need. Apartment complexes are one way to do that. You can get a considerable number of units quickly built and handle kind of a large, a large level of need. And then things that take a little bit longer to build or, or in smaller projects, you know, if somebody comes and says, hey, I can do fifty units, I don't think that's any less desirable. But it would take several fifty-unit projects to really kind of deal with the initial immediate need. So maybe some larger apartment complexes could be helpful in the beginning. And I think that's kind of part of the cost question too. Is, is that where you start to get some better break-even points? You building at a larger scale like that?
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis, I kind of dovetailing on that, uh, two questions. I noticed there were a hundred fifty, uh, very low income or way below market units, each five-year, grouped ahead. I'm hoping that those units are not the result of our economic development. Uh, the ones, the rents would, that would have to be below four hundred fifty dollars. Are, are those for citizens already here in Salina? Or are those being counted as future jobs to be derived from our, I'll call it economic boom? Because, because if, if we're creating jobs like that, then the wages are too low. So, but-
No, all the apartment complexes that we're talking about, the, you know, a hundred and fifty units, those are all market rate.
Okay. So that would not-
So that would be, that would not be subsidized at all.
Yeah. This is Mike Skrag. If it, if it's helpful, I think the housing study, initial housing study took our income, uh, categories and stratified them across the community as they existed, and then calculated affordable either rent rates or, um, uh, mortgage payment rates based on those incomes. So I think what you're seeing, Commissioner Davis, is-
From the old-
That reflection of what our income in the community is.
That's not our current projection then.
Correct. Well, it's still a projected need, but it's not associated with the jobs created as part of the, uh, projects that we incentivized.
All right.
Well, Commissioner France here, if I could again dovetail on that, uh, those prior two questions, you know, we're talking about, you know, the growth in jobs projected at somewhere between twenty-five and thirty-five dollars an hour for many of them anyway. You know, what, uh, what level of rent, what level of home can someone with that kind of wage level affordably live in?
Yeah.
Is that-
Commissioner Hopik here.
Do you want me to answer that?
Whether they've had equity in another property. I mean, there's a lot of things that go into that or, uh, thirty-five an hour-
Well, I do think something worth noting is, I mean, if, if you're coming to do a project like that in our community, I mean, you're running the numbers to see, do you have enough of a market to pay the rental rates that you need to make a return on that investment? So, I mean, some of that is, you know, knowing the market, you know, numbers we've heard for, for studio apartments are in the nine hundred dollar range and, and up for one bedrooms, two bedrooms, going up from there. Um, you know, we saw some numbers coming out of the Lee project for their one and two bedrooms, and I believe they have some studios maybe. Part of that too is with rental and new construction is, uh, lowering your utility rates and things like that. So those are some things to take into account of versus renting a, a home, for instance, where you're maintaining a yard and, uh, paying utilities and things like that. Often apartment complexes, larger ones have grouped those costs in, things like internet, electric, stuff like that. Um, and with new efficiency in building, um, typically utilities are lower.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner France?
Not really, but-
That's what I-
You know, there used to be a rule of thumb that you could take your annual income times two and a half and that'd be the size of the mortgage you could afford.
Yeah.
You could afford to carry. And of course, as, as Commissioner Hopik said, if you had a prior equity that you could apply to that, you could get more home for that, for the same amount of mortgage. But, you know, at twenty-five dollars an hour, that's roughly fifty thousand a year. That's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of mortgage.
Yeah, the, looking back on the twenty sixteen LIVS Salina Plan, it, it did have a table, an affordability analysis. Uh, it had ranges in twenty-five thousand dollar increments. So it projected a fifty thousand dollar income could support eight hundred dollars in rent. And then it had a fifty to seventy-five thousand dollar range that was in that price point that we're talking about, eight hundred to twelve fifty. So I think part of it is whether it's a double income household or, or not. Um, but in terms of the affordability analysis, um, that's what it broke out.
All right.
Uh, Mayor, can I ask just one other question? Because I know we have some other speakers and it's kind of a philosophical question. This is Commissioner Davis, by the way. Uh, you know, the city, any policies, policies it creates are going to be somewhat unified because there's just one city. You know, they may have five people helping derive that policy, but it's one policy. Uh, does the residential construction industry act as a single group in negotiating with us to divide this policy? Or, or is it split up, you know, to where we have eight different policies for eight different types of, of builders? And I'm just curious to know how, how much of a singular group that we are, are we dealing with as far as trying to get to the same, same goal? I mean, I don't need an answer right now, but if, if one of the other speakers can address that.
Good. Your answer.
Sorry.
I guess I wasn't quite, I was a little confused by that. You're wanting to know, do they negotiate together?
Well, I mean, it's, yeah, everyone wants the city to do something. Uh, the city doesn't build houses and our, our general services does not go out and build houses. We have the need for large projects, but we have a lot of small builders. So are we talking about a policy where a lot of builders, you know, carve up a large project into little pieces? Or are we talking about a consortium of builders that can handle a single large project? Because it's a, it's a lot, you know, there's economy, a scale also for us as far as incentives if there are fewer people to, to work with, much like downtown. We, we had one, basically one developer that, you know, everything went through.
Yeah. Commissioner Hopik here, I would think that each, each project that comes to you would stand on its own. I don't, I mean, I think there's multiple as, as, uh, Ms. Driscoll and Mr. Skrag said, I think we've had seven, seven different groups approach us. So I think each one of those would stand on their own merit as to what they were doing. I don't think there's a consortium of people that are, you know, dividing this up. If that's what you're asking.
I mean, do, do we have in Salina enough resources and manpower to create, to turn out, you know, the maximum number of houses that we think we would need in the next three or four years?
Is it where you're talking houses or apartment complexes?
Both.
I would have-
Mike, you're the-
Have to look at somebody like a, I think Mr. Todd Welsh was on here and some other people, but my, my answer would be probably not. I'm guessing there would be an outside developer at some point. I don't know, but.
Yeah. There are some outside developers that have indicated interest in, and, you know, there, we're seeing larger projects than we've seen in the past, or at least interest in larger projects than we've seen in the past. Now, is one developer going to address our entire need? Or are they going to be able to collaborate together to, to develop our entire need? I, I don't think so. It'd be more a case of looking at the scope of the project and, and whether it accomplishes our goals as we try to make our incentive decisions.
Commissioner Hopik here, couple of the things, um, as we were going through this that came to mind is, and I, I saw that there was someone here that we might have another, some numbers or some information come back to us on March first. Is that correct, Ms. Did I lose her?
Yeah. I can hear you.
Okay.
I can hear you. I don't know.
Anyway, what I kind of would like to have is a updated, um, schedule on what lots we currently have available for single family, um, uh, and what those areas are and what the, uh, price range is. I think there's some of those that are maybe zoned for duplexes. I'd like to know that also. Um, I see Mitch is on here from the EDO and I know, uh, Eric Brown's on, I believe, from the chamber. One of the things I would like to see is we, we kind of have a, a range of, of what salaries are there. I would kind of like that broken down a little bit more. Um, and I'm just going to throw out one vision there. They show two hundred new jobs, twenty-five dollars an hour average. Well, is that a hundred at fifteen and a hundred at thirty-five or whatever? Because that's going to help me to know, do I need apartments or do I need single-family homes? And if I need it, what price range am I looking at? So I think for me, I need some of that broken down in a little bit more detail. You know, fifty at this range, seventy-five. I know some of the, uh, uh, different, uh, companies may not want to, to give you, but if we could get that as a, as a group of what's going to be coming in the next year, two years, three years, that would kind of help us, I think.
Um, Mayor, I just, I, I, I agree completely with that. And I think we've had that conversation in some of our economic development, um, scenario discussions because when you have that range, you don't know if the bulk of them are to the lower end of that range and there's just a, a few of the higher paying jobs. So I think that would be really helpful information to have if it's information that, um, can be provided in, in some form.
Yeah. And I don't need to know who comes from which-
Right.
Facility or anything. I just kind of would like to know if we're looking at, you know, eighteen dollar an hour jobs and we maybe need more apartments than we need, you know, than what we have now for single-family lots to build homes on and stuff.
If I could add, Commissioner David, and also some idea of the permanency of the individuals in these jobs. Some of these jobs by nature, folks may only keep for two or three years, you know, so they may be looking for nothing more than an apartment, unless they have enough money to move into a house early and, and flip it or whatever. Uh, so not everyone who moves to town with a decent income is necessarily going to be looking for a house. I, I, I think you need to keep an ample supply of, of apartments, probably overestimated a little bit.
Well, and, and one of the things that was in here, Mayor, or Commissioner Hopik again, um, is, uh, you know, it talked about what we've done in the past. Well, that might be okay to look at, but we have to deal with where we're at right now. And what we have now is for years, we've had everyone saying, we need to see more development, we need, or we need more jobs in Salina. Well, now we have that opportunity. Um, and it's kind of, we're kind of in a catch-22 because right now we have a significant number of jobs coming and construction costs, as Ms. Driscoll stated, have gone through the roof. So, um, you know, we may be looking at having to do some incentives that we've not done in the past. But I think if, if we don't, and you're looking at your employers and saying, well, we want you here, but we're not going to be able to, to, to work with you to, to get those jobs here and keep them. And again, we're looking for jobs that'll be here twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years. I think we're going to probably have to out, think outside the box a little bit.
Outside the box, but within the budget.
Yeah, some of, yeah, I mean, exactly. Yeah, some of, yeah, I mean, exactly. But those are things we need to discuss, and we need to be willing to, to, to analyze that. I, I'm gonna jump on this bandwagon again. I know I, we've talked about it once, but I still think we need to look at what ground the city owns. You know, we have that Centennial, that ground over there by the Centennial Park that I still think is still sitting there vacant, used to be housing. And if we're looking for, to try to build workforce housing, you know, we've got ground there that we could do some RFPs on and get some, some, uh, homes built that would help fill some of this need, I believe. So I still, that's something I still think we need to address.
Is that, is that everyone on the commission? I have just a, if so, I just have a few things that I'd like to bring up, not necessarily for discussion today, but I think when we revisit this on, was it tentatively scheduled for March 8th, did I see on the agenda planner? I think it referenced March 1st here, but I think it was actually March 8th in the agenda planner.
You're correct. It was.
We've been, we've been fighting for spots, so.
I know, I know, I know. I just wanted to make that clear so that the, the, the folks who are here today are thinking March, March 8th. But something I, and, and maybe we need, it needs to be a longer study session time at that time, but just some things that I've been taking notes and made some notes from earlier. I think in Task 4, Ms. Driscoll, you talked about reviewing the incentives that we have, not only locally, but state and federal. You know, I've heard of like RHIDs, the Rural Housing Districts, the Moderate Income Housing Grants. And I think that something that would be helpful for me is to figure out how some of those programs work together with the CHODO that's been established, that work together with the Land Bank, that work together, you know, with North Central Regional Planning Commission, because I know that this is, this is a regional issue. It's not, it's not just, you know, Salina here. So I, I, you know, I think I would appreciate maybe a better understanding, you know, if, if the CHODO's role is going to be providing two or three homes a year that are rehabbed in areas of change, you know, that's good to know. If they've got a, a bigger vision, that would be helpful to know, too. And similarly with the Land Bank, I know you've had more than enough on your plate in the last couple of years, truly, I do. But, you know, so like, you know, where do, where do we stand with that? If I were coming from out of town, could I, you know, or, or in town, could I be like, hey, could you give me a list of properties that are available to build? Not necessarily a huge apartment complex, but maybe a triplex or a quadplex or something like that, if it's, if it's zoned correctly. So I guess I'm just a little, I would, I'd like to have some more insight as to how the different programs and the different entities could, can, can work together. And then I was looking, and it looks like we've had 100, about 128 multifamily units, whether income restricted or not, since 2015. And it looked like, based on the original housing study, that our critical need is really for the housing units that's under, that are under 125,000. And if we're talking about like standalone, single family, I mean, as long as I've been on the commission, we've had builders saying, look, I can't do something at a price point that, you know, is under 175 or, or 200,000. And if housing costs are going up, it's like, I guess, are we, are we then talking about, you know, people renting? Are we talking about duplexes? So I guess, I, I guess I would like a little bit more clarity about, you know, what that under, under $125,000 price point, you know, what, what some of the options would be for that. Just a couple more things, and then I want to make sure we give everybody a chance to speak. I believe, I don't know which one of you touched on this earlier, but I think there are a lot of things that go into attracting, or, or, you know, workers and, and can address this workforce shortage. I mean, you've got the impact of wages, got the impact of housing affordability, childcare availability. I mean, it's a whole lot of things that are, that are working together. And I don't know how to do this, but to me, it seems to be, needs to be kind of a holistic discussion that occurs between multiple agencies to make sure that we're not putting all of our efforts into, say, housing while we're ignoring other issues that, that, that may be at play here as well. And then finally, what, and, and I, we've talked about this in the past, is the role that our local lenders play in terms of their willingness to, to look at different housing types or to do larger scale projects. And I don't know that we have any, you know, financial folks here joining us that could, could speak to that. But, you know, our, do our developers have the same access to financing that they would if they were in, I don't know, McPherson or Wichita or Manhattan? Or, you know, do, do we have the kinds of relationships that can, that can get that done? So those are just some kind of things that have been going through my head. And with that, I would be more than happy to open up the conversation to anyone who would like to participate. Again, I see that we have quite a range of people. If you would like to ask questions, offer comments to the commission, please raise your virtual hand. And if you don't know how to do that, I'm sure one of our staff can walk us through it really quickly. Or you can, if you've got your camera on, you can wave your, your hand, and we can unmute you, and you can, you can speak your piece. I see Ms. Salem has her hand raised. Could we unmute her?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners, for taking the time to hear us. This is, this is an important study, and I'm very glad that you're focusing on it. And Commissioner Hodges, you're right, it is a holistic approach. There's many things that have to happen for this community to be ready for this many people to, to move here and, and to raise and thrive here. To me, it's a little bit, I guess I had a mentor once who always talked about a lobster in a pot, and the water gets a little bit hotter all the time, and you kind of don't notice till it's a crisis and you're boiling over. You know, the city's had some opportunities in the past to, to have some good sized apartment complexes and, and hasn't taken advantage of that. And that's, I don't know that most of you were even on the city commission when all of those was happening. But I think we're obviously at that point now. We're having trouble as we recruit people and they start to look for housing, you know, where am I gonna live? Like to come to work there, but I need a decent place to live. We have, and, and that's rental or buying. I mean, lots of people are happy to start out an apartment complex, frankly, in order to come here for, for a good job and, and work their way into a home. So those are things that apartment situation to me is a, a critical place to start, because it provides housing for a lot of people, and it does need to be market rate. You know, I'm not deep into your studies, and I see the areas that you've highlighted that you would like to see the growth happen. Unfortunately, that's not what your customers want. Your customers, I believe, for the most part, want to be in Southern Salina. I mean, if you think about the hiring, that's, you know, Vortex and Swans and Great Plains, and that's, that's where there's land to build. So I do think that that's gonna be the, the primary area that any builder's gonna look at, and that most people coming here are going to look at. The downtown revitalization is great. The, the Leeloffs are great, but it's limited, and parking is limited, and there's only so much that can be done downtown. And I appreciate what's happening there, because that's helping to attract people here. But there's only so much housing there, or what I would say is, in the northern part of Salina, that's going to be attractive. Housing costs certainly have escalated. And I'm not in the business necessarily of knowing what a city should fund or should not fund. But we've done so much to lay the groundwork for growth, both in the city investing in the, in the community, in the schools, the public, private partnerships. And to me, this is just one additional step forward together that, that can make this work. What, what a fortunate situation to be in a city that is attracting so many jobs and that has businesses that want to grow here. So I just encourage you to, to do everything we can to make that possible. Because if you don't, all of our businesses are in a bind, and, and we don't want to go elsewhere. We want to be here. This is our home. So we just ask you to help us do that to the extent that the city is possible, is capable of doing that.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Mayor Hodges, Todd Welsh is asking to speak.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Hi, Mayor Commissioners, Todd Welsh.
Yes.
I'll start out with a little bit of thing here. I feel like I'm living 2017 all over again. I feel like we had some of these conversations in 2017, so it's kind of interesting to hear that. And, and as Linda said, Salem, it's like, the pot was boiling, and we didn't really know, and nobody really, you know, we kind of pushed the can down the road a little bit. A, a couple of things that I would like to add on here, you know, from the builder's standpoint, we really only have probably four, what I want to call spec builders in Salina right now currently building. And at maximum capacity, if each one of those builders could build 20 homes, so there's a couple of spec builders in town that could maximum build maybe 20 homes a year. So that's two of them. So that gives us 40. Me doing it somewhat part-time and, and, and having it, I could do maybe maximum, the capacity I can handle is 15. I've got another guy in town that maybe could do 10. So let's say that's 65 new constructions that the local builders who are doing it in what a spec capacity. Now, we still have some builders in town that do custom homes. When I say custom, 350, 400, 500, you could go out and hire those guys today. And that's their niche, is to build two or three half million dollar homes a year, which obviously we're not talking about. It's like, how could we get that done in the lower capacity? So for those of you who are asking Rod and Trent and things like that, it's like, what could, what do we currently have? If we just went another year, you're gonna have, you know, the, the four guys in town continue to build and pull possibly 60 permits next year. That doesn't really help us of the need, what you guys are saying on there, is how do we get in scale? Like, how do we get a couple a hundred of them to be available in the next, you know, even 24 months versus looking at 12 months? I'm not quite sure I have an answer for you, but I do know this, and there's one thing that's always continues to surface in the city of Salina, and that is, well, let's go out and see what the other communities are doing, and then we'll do a study, and then we'll find out what we need to do based on what everybody else is doing. And why don't we figure out what we want to do? And I don't really care what everybody else is doing, because in the last three years, I've watched Mound Ridge do 100 homes. I've been, uh, watched 60 go in at Newton through an RHID. I'm currently participating with Hays at 77 homes, and I'm traveling back and forth because they put together a program. And if you want to call Doug out at Grow Hays, they've done a phenomenal job. And then I've watched Linsburg, three local guys here in town, put together a, a project in Linsburg that I believe is an RHID. And we've done nothing. And I think that that's interesting, that, again, it's, I believe that there's gotta be somebody, that the current city commission has to either hire somebody or say, we have to go into this direction and follow what it is. And I think what's happened is, we all know it was coming, but then something else happened at the fieldhouse, and now your direction is over there. And then we can always get off on another direction, because there was never anybody specifically put in charge of talking to this Ross guy out of Kansas City on how to put an RHID together. How, how getting these guys together to focus on directly coming up with a parcel of ground that is dedicated and funded somehow. I mean, I'm, I'm, I know enough to be dangerous with the Grow Hays part, but, you know, my understanding was there was money that was set aside for, um, large commercial development. And when they couldn't get the commercial development to come to town because there was no housing available. So Doug went to them and said, okay, how about we take some money from that coffer, and we put it over here, and let's build the housing. And they're, they're currently purchased a piece of property for around $130,000, $140,000. They are providing all of the infrastructure, and then they are turned around and selling those lots to developers for, or builders, four at a time. And you have to build a house that not to exceed 175,000. You have to build one not to exceed 200, and one that does not exceed 225,000. And so I'm working with a group of individuals up there I partnered with, and we, we've selected to build four, because that's the maximum they will give you at the time. And so we've committed to build four, worked towards housing projects in Hays right now. And as soon as we get those four into contract, they'll continue to give us an additional lot to continue to build homes there. Now, it has brought up a challenge. Since that project right now, I believe if you drove up there, they are burying the water lines and all the infrastructure. But now the lumber price has come in there. So we've signed agreements with them to build homes at 175,000 that we've now went back to them and said, look, if the lumber doesn't come down, there's no way we can build these projects for 175,000. And they've agreed. Like, they, they haven't said, okay, you're committed to it, and you're, we're gonna make you lose money. Like, if they want it to be a win-win for the guys that are involved, and I believe they've got four builders in the local area who have said, hey, we want to make it work as well. Now, yep, go ahead.
All right. Mr. Welsh, since you're, since you're involved in this project in Hays, who in Hays kind of takes the lead, who's the lead agency on that? Is that something that's handled by the city? Is that, who's, who's like the lead entity? Because my position is you probably, if, if you really want to get something done, there has to be someone who has ownership of it, like you mentioned. And I just was curious as to who does that in Hays. And I see Mr. Robinson.
Yeah, it's a great question, because I don't know exactly Doug's role, and maybe Mitch can, because I've talked to Mitch and Eric both about this, and they're very well of the project going on. And Mitch knows Doug, or has spoken to Doug, and maybe Eric has as well. My understanding was Doug maybe was the, in, uh, he was on the, the chamber board, and then I think they went through a change of the person who was in charge of the chamber, and then Doug was running it for a little while. And then there must be a group called Grow Hays. And, and again, as Mitch may be able to talk a little bit more about that. But I would be, it's almost somebody like a Mitch who is in charge of putting that together. And I don't know, I know what Mitch's role is, but I don't know whether he has the capacity to also now work that way. But you guys basically control Mitch and can say, okay, stop working on economic development and only work on housing, and have him become an expert in who are the players in Salina who want to come. I mean, I met with a gentleman by the name of Ross, and maybe Mike Scragg has as well, who came to town, and they were, they were just itching to bring an RHID here. And we never could figure out how to make that happen. And I'm not sure what happened to him. And I think he's the one who went to Mound Ridge and, and in Newton, and has done some other projects. So how do we get back in touch with that guy and make that work? You know, we have our own OPG here in town who's done great projects, who know how to do a lot of that stuff, but I imagine they're at capacity as well. I've also heard, I think they split up, and, and one part went one way and the other, so I'm not really sure what they're going on now. So I feel like I've spoke a lot, but I just wanted to make sure we understood what was going on. My philosophy, now I'm gonna put my real estate hat on versus my developer or builder hat. What is happening in our community right now is, and I'm gonna go back to the basic streets again, we need the Ralphs, the Carls, the Lewis, the Norton's houses. We need that stock of housing, which used to be $129,000. And I just sold one on Norton last night that was listed at 164, and we had to buy it for 170. And that house three years ago was 145. And today it's 170, because that's what they're looking for. I still don't believe that the Kubota's of the worlds, the Great Plains, and the One Visions are not coming down here to purchase $350,000 homes, and they're not coming down here to purchase what our housing stock is today, which is a $95,000 or $100,000 home. They're looking for a three bath, one or two bath, again, Carl, Lewis, Max, that central location right there that they can move their family to and feel safe. And that's what I'm trying to relocate to town. And when they come here, they're spending $20,000, $30,000 more than what they wanted to. I'm still the believer that says, the housings that you disagree that I'm building, that are 250 and 300,000, I am not building for One Vision, Great Plains, or the other one. I'm building it for the lady who currently, or the family that currently lives on Max, Lewis, Carl, and Norton, because I need those homes. And the only way to get those homes to come available, because we can't build $140,000 homes, the only way to get those available is to show them homes that are 275, and take the equity from those homes that they purchased at 89, $95,000, and move them up into a larger home that's there. That's.
You, and, and I hate, I hate to cut you off, but I know some other people that would.
I agree.
Thank you. No, I really appreciate hearing your perspective. Thank you, Mr. Welsh. Is there anyone else who would like to, to speak? And we'll try to get everybody in if possible. Mr. Robinson? You're unmuted. Okay, great. Thanks. Go ahead.
Well, yes. Yeah, you're right. I have talked with Doug. He runs the Grow Hays Order. Well, yes, yeah, that's right, I have talked with Doug, he runs the Grow Hayes organization, he started as a volunteer and then they hired him after their previous director was let go. Their funding that Todd was talking about was funds that were directed for industrial development that they were not having much success on, plus there was the need for housing in their community. So they had a group, their board went that way, put Doug on the hunt for property that they could identify, they also had a person make a donation to help reduce the land costs, and then they had their funding with their money they'd had for many years, so that's really starting, the spring will really be taking off because of the weather, they hadn't, didn't get their utilities in this fall, so a good plan appears, targeting the prices, as Todd again said, the cost of the land, not the land, but the construction cost has definitely impacted everybody we've been talking with. I've also had some discussions with people out of Iowa, Nebraska, one community up there has even had their own apartment complex that they developed and they're owning, then there's a, they're also doing single-family homes, so they're getting very aggressive, so I'm going to be having a conversation with that community later this week and learn more about the details. So we have been doing a lot of research, Eric has been doing a lot of research, so you know, this kind of a pivot situation for our group, we have not, we've elevated housing as a priority within our group because, as I'm talking about, we see what's coming and we've got to react to that. If not, those projects could easily go somewhere else, or maybe the expansion might be reduced in size and could locate somewhere else, so we're very concerned and want to, you know, move it as fast as we can to get some construction going. We've got a couple of good projects that they seem to be very strong builder, a lot of the question is where they're going, they're able to get incentives from the community, so we've just got to figure out what can we live with and what will make these products doable within Salina. And for the long term, you know, Mayor, you mentioned some of the things that's happened, you know, the school system has invested 110 million, the downtown investment, all these things are part of the whole package to make the community successful, housing is one of those things to have as a piece of that package. Now, but going back to Commissioner Hoppe's comments about wanting to get the details on wage levels, job numbers, all that, we can easily get with our employers and get that information as you asked for.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Or I'm sorry, and I didn't mean to cut you off, are you, are you?
Yes, I'm letting somebody else talk.
Okay, great, thanks, sorry. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Mayor Hodges, there aren't any hands raised at the current time, so if somebody thinks they have, I'm not seeing it, and.
Yeah, Eric Brown from the Chamber of Commerce has his hand raised, if you could unmute him, I'd appreciate it. Are you there, Eric?
Yeah, Eric, you'll, okay, there you go.
Yes, I'm here.
Great, thank you.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you again for your time. I wanted to make sure to allow any of the other businesses or lenders on the, it looks like on the call to make some comments, but I'll go ahead and jump in. You know, one of the things that we talked about, what's critical, hearing, you know, talking to Todd and understanding what's happening around our need for labor, I think anything under $250,000, whether it's a single-family home, whether it's high-density housing, I mean, though 250,000K in building those homes is a need. I sent you that letter from Realtor Steve Thompson, as of Tuesday last week, there was 39 houses on the market on the MLS in Saline County, or I'm sorry, in the city of Salina, so we know that there's a shortage there. One of the things that hasn't been discussed yet is the need for student housing, we talk about Kansas Wesleyan, K-State Polytechnic, Salina Tech, KU School of Medicine as well, all in expansion mode right now. The other thing to think about is that labor availability in that long-term, if we can't get our students in, or students into those programs and capture them, that's part of what, on a holistic picture, what we've been doing as a community when, you know, Mitch talks about the River Project or the Downtown Project or whatever it may be, we are listening as a community and really trying to give those amenities to those students who are becoming our labor force long-term. Obviously, one of the things that I do want to stress is that the opportunity is now, I mean, the time is of the essence to get this going, obviously, if we wait another three or four months to make a decision or wait on the housing study, I mean, that's an opportunity for those current developers that are looking at Salina to move on. Developers right now, not all developers are created equal, not all investors are created equal, we do know what we have to work with, those seven that have approached the city at this point, and understanding that this planning perfection, I, it just cannot, it's maybe not plausible, it's not something that can be done quickly when we know the need is there right now. The other thing that we're, to kind of keep in mind is the competitive environment that these developers are looking at, this is not something that's Salina-specific, so they can go to markets that have a lot of opportunities, much like ours, and then they can go to markets, some of those markets have less risk, ours is inherently a little more risky, and that's why you're seeing some of these developers ask for these tax abatements or these housing incentives to put these projects up. So we have a good amount of interest there, and one of the things that I would caution against is trying to create a holistic ordinance or holistic approach to this, rather than taking these developers and these projects one by one and making sure that those projects pencil for the community. A lot has happened in the last 10 years to put ourselves in this position to be able to support our businesses, you've seen what, the letters you've received, the information you've received around just strictly the manufacturers, we're not talking about the hospital, the education sector either, that are both in-demand high wages, high wage positions, so if we want to be able to grow our community, I would definitely ask you to support, looking at these developers and getting this started sooner rather than later, as we hope to really support everything that's happening right now, and that's a big piece of that. So the wage question that Commissioner Hoppe discussed, I'm actually looking at the 2020 Wage Survey from the state of Kansas, so I've been able to look at the, at least six different occupational codes under production, and those range anywhere from 1350 an hour to 2635 an hour in Saline County. So those kind of aggregate numbers we can put together rather quickly and get those to you. So again, thank you, I've probably said enough, but if you have questions, anything else that I can help with, please let me know.
Mayor, if I could, for the larger developers from outside of Saline County, do they come with their own financing, or is that something that our local lenders have to get involved with, or should be involved with, shouldn't they have to?
You know, that, it really depends on the developer and the way that they structure their deals, I just, the, those news stories that were referenced earlier, I had a developer out of Canton, Massachusetts contact me on Sunday looking for more information, and so those developers, they may be pulling investors from the East Coast, from the West Coast, there could be investors right here in the Midwest that want to keep their money locally, both from a, you know, an altruistic standpoint, but I can't speak to the lenders on that side, but the investors can come from anywhere.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Mayor, Kent Buer had his hand up to speak, Kent Buer from First Bank.
Okay, great, and I think Ms. Driscoll was going to say something, can you hold on to that for just a minute? We have about eight to 10 more minutes to take comments and questions, let's go ahead and hear from Mr. Buer and then maybe we can go back to Ms. Driscoll if that's all right.
Can you hear me, Madam Mayor?
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Buer.
Thank you very much, I'll speak quick, because I know you have other people who want to talk. I've been working in downtown Salina in the financial industry for 21 years, I remember when we were very sleepy downtown, the stars have aligned for Salina, we should be doing backflips, and I think a lot of people are, the opportunity, and if you, if we look at what, the amount of money that just Tony's Pizza alone is going to invest in our community, if that's the only project we were talking about, we would still need to be talking about, let's get some more houses built. Several people have commented, is there money to the land, are the local lenders willing to stand, step up? If bigger projects come in, will the local lenders give it, give it, give an opportunity, get an opportunity? My comment is, if there's a good project, there is money to lend, banks want to lend money for good projects. If there's a big out-of-town developer comes from Kansas City and he already has this financing, that's fine, we shouldn't, we shouldn't say, hang on, we need to let the local lenders have an opportunity, the local lenders need to be doing their job and be out there proactively, it's capitalism, it works very well, so don't worry about the lenders, we're ready to help the community and we're willing to partner together where needed. I just encourage you not to worry about the holistic approach and do more studies. Our guts are strong, there is so much opportunity here that we're going to miss it if we don't get some housing going, so if anybody has any questions, I can answer to it if I can, but I appreciate the opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Buer, I appreciate it. Ms. Driscoll, I think you had something to add.
Yeah, I was just going to note that, you know, when we talk about economic incentives, we think about incentivizing each individual project, but when we talk about projects like Hayes, or we look at Lawrence and their land trust and Land Bank, it's worth noting that the success of those types of programs had a lot of money behind them. Money was redirected, I think it was indicated from what was supposed to be industrial incentives, now into residential in Hayes, Lawrence had the same thing, they had a large project, I think a stadium finished under budget, they took the money from that project and allocated it towards their land bank and land trust. So those are really creative out-of-the-box programs that have been very successful, but I think it's worth noting that they have a large amount of financial contribution from somewhere behind them, and typically they weren't from grants or federal programs, they were from the municipality, so you know, it's still an incentive program that we're creating if we do something like that, and we'll take funding in order for them to be successful.
It only takes money. We just, yeah, yeah, I hear you, that's a great point, thank you very much, Ms. Driscoll, I don't mean to be flip, but we can always use, we can always use more cash.
This is Commissioner Hoppe here, one of the things that I think was said is, you know, updating the housing study is not a bad idea, but I've seen us do this type of thing before and it drags on and I kind of agree, and I can't remember if it was Eric, Mr. Brown or who, but we are in a bit of a crunch, and if we don't kind of allow some developers to come to us with their, with their plans, and I hope if they're listening that they'll do that, that we can start brainstorming about making some of this happen, because if we wait through the summer, we get into the winter months again, we're going to be behind the eight ball, and I think this, we are at a critical time and I think we need to really be, be aggressive on this right now.
This is Commissioner Ryan, I'd like to echo that, I'm a little concerned that we're going to engage in paralysis by analysis, so we need to, there's enough need, short-term need, and we know what we need in apartments, that we need to step up and take some risk to solve this problem, so we can move, continue to move forward to gather the other information that we need, but there's some obvious choices that we need to make now, or as soon as possible.
This is Commissioner France, I would concur with both of those comments, I think that, you know, I'm thinking of it as kind of a two-part thing, and that is, we need to do something fairly quickly and fairly timely, and then we also need to sit back and say, okay, what other components can we draw into this to make it work? You know, Mr. Welsh deals mostly in single-family or two-family stock is my understanding, and his idea is great, if we can free up, you know, those houses on Max and Carl and Leslie and, you know, that central Salina that can be had for 200, then that is a market we need to address, but that is a, compared to what I perceive as the need right now, that's kind of nibbling at the edges, and I think we need to do something, my preference is lean thing, is it sounds like we need, you know, apartments, multifamily, something that we can, people can move into, live for a couple of years, and then as other markets, other homes become available, they can move, move out to, and, but I have a real sense of urgency about that, I mean, we've got people coming to town now who are having difficulty finding places to live, and I certainly don't want to create the option, the possibility of, you know, we used to have trouble providing jobs and now we've got the jobs, we don't have any places for people to live, that's kind of a good problem to have, I think, but we do need to step forward to address it, I think, as quickly as possible. So I'm kind of with Commissioner Hoppe, I think it's time to go ahead and update the study, but I also think we need to talk about and take some action on some options, you know, follow a pilot project if nothing else, and let's see if we can make something work reasonably quickly.
So Mike Scragg here, we have developers that are ready, willing and able to bring forward a proposal, if that is the consensus of the commission, we can, again, take a dual approach here and bring forward the proposals that we have, provide you additional detail about their proposed projects and finances and requests, and if that's acceptable to you, we can certainly facilitate that as we also work on the housing study.
I would like to see that happen.
Mayor Hodges, I would like to see that happen too, and I think Commissioner France articulated it very well and some of the other commissioners too, I think it does need to be, you know, a two-part approach, because even as we're trying to alleviate the acute needs, which I am not disagreeing that exist, I mean, they do, but I think we also need to be looking at how we craft a policy that's going to be a consistent policy that can guide us in the future. I wish that we had an economic development policy that helps us evaluate some of the projects we look at, and I think it would be helpful for future housing projects. That being said, I don't think that we need to hold everything up to wait for that, but it is something that needs to be developed concurrently with looking immediately at proposals that can help us right away.
Commissioner, I agree with you viewing the proposals, but that holistic approach can't be totally abandoned, there's no point in bringing people here if you don't have a school for the kids to go to, if the employees can't go to work because there's no daycare, you haven't really helped anything. So as part of the housing development, there's going to have to be another rail running parallel at the same time working on these other issues.
Agreed. All right, it's 3:55, I guess this would be the last call if anybody wants to share anything, we have another minute or two, otherwise we will adjourn, oh, I'm sorry, I see Mr. Bergkamp has his hand raised, could we make sure he's unmuted, please?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
All right. The other thing I would encourage city staff and commissioners to look at is internal workings of the city. My experience working with the city and building is rather dated, but I've had conversations recently with people that are not represented on this call, but the city of Salina has a reputation of moving rather slow on granting building permits and then asking for information, it's just atypical. And so when you're talking about speed, I agree with that completely, but I would encourage you to look internal as well and see what the city can do to improve that situation in your own, in your own staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bergkamp. All right, thank you all very much for being here today. Again, if there's anyone who didn't get the opportunity to speak and you'd like to reach out to the City Commission, we can be reached at citycommission@salina.org, and we will adjourn for four minutes so everyone can have a brief break and we will be back. And we will adjourn for four minutes so everyone can have a brief break and we will be back.
Procedurally, do we cut the camera and the mic?
Yeah, you can just cut your camera and the mic and then we can, you can rejoin.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll mute everybody.
Thank you, Mayor.
4 o'clock and I will call the February 1st, 2021 Salina City Commission meeting to order. And we'll begin by confirming with staff that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been provided. Yes, it has. Thank you very much. With that, we will proceed with roll call. Mayor Hodges? Here. Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner France?
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick? Uh-oh.
He's muted.
There now, can you hear me? Here.
Yes. Yes. Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
All right. Despite the siren, if you will join me, please, for a moment of silence.
And then it opens all the participants and I invite the, yeah, and the attorney.
Thank you. We'll move into awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the month of February 2021 as Black History Month in the city of Salina. Sandra Beverly will read the proclamation. Good afternoon, everyone. I brought along two people with me, my grandchildren, Gabriel and Scarlett, because I think they needed to be here to hear this. The proclamation as reads, whereas during the month of February, we honor the men, women and children who fought for freedom, equality and living the pursuit of happiness. We celebrate Black History Month to show our gratitude to those like Harriet Tubman, who was one of many that risked her life to free slaves through the Underground Railroad. We recognize the lost souls that were killed or imprisoned fighting for the right for black children to go to school with white children, for blacks to have the right to vote, for Jesse Owens to become the first African-American to win four gold medals at the 1936 Olympic Games in Berlin, Germany. And whereas even today, the black community has had to rise up and fight for their voices to be heard. They are fighting for the souls who were murdered. They are showing young generations how to be proud of their skin color. The black community is showing the invisible chains that are still on them and how they are finally breaking the shackles off. And they're saying, no more injustice, no more black men, women or children being killed, no more silence. Whereas there is no longer a responsibility, it is a duty to show the inequalities, the injustices would still go on to this day. It is a time for us to unite and rise up to the black community to secure their birthright and secure our birthright to freedom. As we mark the 45th year of Black History Month, let us reflect on all that occurred this past year in 2020. Let us remember the sacrifices made by people of different colors and different generations to unite and march with the black community. Let us remember how they were shot with tear gas in their faces, but they still kept going. They kept marching forward until one day, I Have a Dream will no longer be just a historical speech, but it will be the life black people and others finally achieve. Now therefore, I, Melissa Rose Hodges, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the month of February 24, February 2021, Black History Month and urge that every citizen of Salina join me in celebrating the diversity and individual character of each one of our neighbors by recognizing that a fundamental strength of our community is based on the diversity among us. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this day, February 1st, 2021. Melissa Rose Hodges, Honorable Mayor, City of Salina.
Thank you very much, Ms. Beverly. I really appreciate you getting the proclamation done. This is so very important. I know that 2021 has presented more challenges still with doing things virtually. Are there any events or things that you would like to, to share with the community?
The national theme for Black History Month this year is the Black Family: Representation, Identity and Diversity. And that's part of the reason I wanted my grandchildren behind me while we were doing this because I would have brought them to the building to see this because of that. Everything is happening virtually. We just had our NAACP State Meeting this last weekend and that was virtually, it's a whole new world and we're getting used to it. But I hope we get back to some semblance of what we had before. I also have for each of the commissioners a calendar and it's from the Equal Justice Initiative. And that is the organization that is helping myself. There's a group here in Salina called the Dana Adams Project. And we are trying to get things in line so that we can have a marker here in Salina. Our target date is February 2022 to have an installation of a marker in remembrance of Dana Adams, who was lynched in Celine County. So those are some of the things that I do know about. I know churches are putting on different programs. I would just encourage everyone to remember to practice grace, remember we're all human and to look at each other as human first and color second.
Wow. Thank you, Ms. Beverly. And thank you for your work on behalf of Dana Adams because I only learned about Mr. Adams two or three years ago when I was on the commission. And if it hadn't been for people bringing this to, to our attention, it, it's lost to history and it's so important not to lose that. So thank you to Scarlett, and I'm sorry, I missed your grandson's name?
Gabriel.
Scarlett and Gabriel, thank you so much for being here today. And thank you all for the important work that you're doing. Thanks, Sandy. It's good to see you.
Hope to see you all soon in person. Thanks.
Yes, thank you. All right.
We're done. Now you can act crazy. You were on TV.
I thought she was talking to us and I was like, not quite yet, not quite yet. We have to go faster. All right, we haven't, we had another proclamation added to the agenda, is that right?
That's correct. Item 3.2, the month of February 2021 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month in the city of Salina. Kaitlin Butts will read the proclamation.
Hi, everyone. I'll just get right to it. Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas one in three adolescent in the United States is a victim of physical, emotional or verbal abuse from a dating partner, a figure that far exceeds victimization rates for other types of violence affecting youth. Whereas females between the ages of 16 and 24 are most vulnerable to intimate partner and sexual violence, experiencing abuse at a rate almost triple the national average. And whereas high school students who experience physical violence in a dating relationship are more likely to use drugs and alcohol, are at greater risk of suicide and are much more likely to carry patterns of abuse into future relationships. And whereas young people victimized by dating partner are more likely to engage in risky sexual behavior and unhealthy dieting behaviors and the experience may disrupt normal development of self-esteem and body image. And whereas nearly half of teens who experience dating violence report that incidents of abuse took place in a school building or on school grounds. Whereas only 33% of teens who are in an abusive relationship ever tell anyone about the abuse. And 81% of parents surveyed either believe teen dating violence is not an issue or admit they don't, do not know if it is one. And whereas by providing young people, parents and professionals with education about healthy relationships, warning signs of abuse and relationship skills, and by changing attitudes that support violence, we recognize that dating violence can be prevented. And whereas the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas needs all of Salina to work toward ending teen dating violence by empowering young people to develop healthier relationships, assisting victims in assessing the information and supportive services they need, creating better and more resource sources for young people in need, instituting effective intervention and prevention policies in schools and engaging in discussions with family members and peers to promote awareness and prevention of the quiet epidemic of teen dating violence. Now therefore, the city of Salina Board of Commissioners hereby designates February 2021 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month and urges citizens to recognize and assist all those who serve the rights and needs of victims of teen dating violence.
Thank you very much, Kaitlin Butts. Does D-VAC or are there any other sponsors in the community that have events, virtual or otherwise, going on to talk about teen dating violence?
Right, we specifically, well, I'll start as, as a whole nation. Like the Respect Week for teen dating violence is February 8th through the 14th. And the theme of the whole month actually is Know Your Worth. And then there's like a Wear Orange Day, which is Tuesday, February 9th, to like draw attention, attention to the issue. And then specifically at D-VAC, we're doing a Teen Dating Violence 1-on-1, 101 presentation. And that, you can get all the links through our Facebook. And that will be February 25th at 11:00 a.m. And that has like the Zoom link on there and you can sign up through there. And then as well as all month, I'll be posting just stats and just general information on all of our social media pages, so.
Great. Thank you ver, thank you very much. I'm glad that you're able to get all of those things coordinated and out there at a time where it's really difficult to do that. And we'll, so we'll be looking to your Facebook page for, especially on February 25th.
Correct, at 11:00 a.m., yeah. And there's this, there's the signup and there's, we also have LinkedIn member right out. But yeah, so we'll do a Zoom training for that, so.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, before we get to Citizens Forum, I had asked City Manager Mike Scragg to begin updating us very quickly on the, the stats and the trends in the community where coronavirus is concerned from the previous week.
Sure. The data that I have is going to compare the, what was reported Friday of last week to Friday of the week prior. The county puts out information on Mondays, but I think that's probably happening, happening simultaneously. So as in terms of new cases, they reported 196 new cases, which is 50 less than they reported a week prior. Active cases were reported as 1,789, which is 66 less than the week prior. Total recoveries are at 3,637. That's 256 additional recoveries since the week prior. Hospitalizations were at 22, which is three more than, than a week ago, which was at 19. And then total deaths, total deaths are at 92, which is, represents six additional deaths in the past week.
Thank you. I mean, it's, I, it's, it's, it's great to hear about the number of cases going down. And just as a reminder to folks who are watching, you can get on Celine County's website and sign up both for updates, three times a week, updates Monday, Wednesday and Friday with the most recent coronavirus information and Tuesday, Thursday vaccination updates. And we are in phase two of our vaccinations. So hopefully those will proceed quickly. That brings us to Citizens Forum. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak on an item that is not on today's agenda?
And Mike Scragg, Mayor, if I may, we probably need to call on one.
Yes, sorry, instructions.
Yes, both that and then I'll touch on executive session and how I'll handle that since we have one on the agenda as well.
Thank you.
Okay. So. Sorry. I'm trying to screen share and I'm not the host, so.
I can make you host if you want.
Yes, that would probably be ideal. What I will say while Brad is doing that is if you are phoning in rather than going through the app or going through the Zoom website, you will need to hit star nine if you are called in and you would like to raise your hand to comment during the meeting. I will note too, Meta Mayor, just if some of these issues have a lot of folks and you ask a meeting moderator to call on people, they need a minute to slide through that. We're learning for larger meetings, there's a lot of people to keep an eye out for. With that, screen sharing. Brad, it doesn't seem to be working. So I will walk through this because this is not my day for technology. So what you will find is in the lower part of your screen, if you are in the actual website, you will see an icon that says Participants. It's got two little people. If you click on that, you can see who's in the meeting. If you highlight yourself, you will pop up and it will show a little yellow hand and you can indicate you want to speak during the meeting. That will highlight it for the host, knowing that you need to speak. At that point, the mayor will identify you once she calls for comments and we will go through hand by hand. Your hand will be unclicked once your comments are taken, indicating that your comment has been taken. There is a chat feature, so if you have questions during the meeting, you can see that under More. That's indicating. That's indicated with the three little dots that are in that same menu bar that are either at the bottom of your screen if you're using the app on your web browser. If you're in the app on either your phone or an iPad, that bar may appear in the upper right-hand corner. That bar also has other features where you can raise your hand and chat, as I mentioned. So the key is look for your menu bar. Either look for the participant icon or look for the three dots that are there to access either of those. And like I said, if you called in, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine.
And if I could add on with respect to executive session, the call, we kind of refer to it as the call, but the Zoom meeting will remain in place. If you're a member of the public, a side room will be created where the individuals that are going into the executive session will receive an invitation from the host and they'll go into a side room. The meeting will stay active. You can stay on the line. You don't need to do anything in terms of getting off and dialing back in. Once the executive session is concluded, the participants in the executive session will return to that main meeting and we'll pick up where we left off. So it's very similar to the approach that we had applied physically. Everyone can stay put. Those in the executive session will leave and go to an alternate meeting. When that's done, they'll conclude and return back to the group that's standing by. So if you're a member of the public, essentially, you really don't need to do anything other than stay on the line and stand by as the executive session is happening elsewhere.
Thank you, Mr. Skregg and Ms. Driscoll. And the only other thing that I have to add is in the event that you can't find the buttons that we were referring to in order to virtually raise your hand, if all else fails, turn on your camera and physically raise your hand so that we can recognize you. And now that we've got that piece of business out of the way, are there any citizens that would like to virtually or physically raise their hand and/or hit star nine if you're calling in to make comments on any item not on today's agenda? I don't see anyone. Can I confirm that with staff that?
As Commissioner Hodges, or Mayor Hodges, I do not have anybody who's expressed an interest at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson. And thank you for helping us out with our technology needs today, too. That will bring us to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, which we don't have any. That takes us to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of January 25, 2021. Item 6.2, Resolution Number 21-7934, concluding the 2020 evaluation of the city manager's performance. Item 6.3, consider Resolution Number 21-7931, authorizing and providing for the replacement of four rooftop HVAC units in Great Plains Manufacturing Convention Hall and relocation of HVAC controls for these units to connect to the main floor control system at Tony's Pizza Event Center and authorizing the issuance of temporary notes and/or general obligation bonds of the city to pay the cost thereof. Item 6.4, consider Resolution Number 21-7932, authorizing and providing for the replacement of portable basketball floors at Tony's Pizza Event Center and authorizing the issuance of temporary notes and/or general obligation bonds of the city to pay the cost thereof.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that a commissioner would like to have removed for discussion?
Commissioner Davis, 6.2.
Thank you. We'll remove item 6.2. Anyone else?
Commissioner Ryan, Mayor, I would move we approve the 6.1, 6.3, and 6.4 as presented.
Commissioner Davis, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items 6.1, 6.3, and 6.4. May I have a roll call?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hopick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
And that motion passes 5-0, which will bring us back to item 6.2. And I would like to thank Commissioner Vice Mayor Davis for pulling this off the agenda. If it's all right with you, Commissioner Davis, I would like to read the resolution.
That was all I was going to ask you to do. Your voice would be very appropriate.
Right, thank you. All right. I wanted to read, we just, first of all, to give this some context, we, the city commission annually reviews the city manager's job performance. And we have just completed that annual evaluation. And normally, we take action if there's an adjustment to the city manager's pay or benefits or anything like that. And this year, despite an outstanding performance evaluation, City Manager Mike Skregg opted not to accept a raise or a bonus because of, you know, wanting to lead by example and acknowledge that employees throughout our organization weren't going to be receiving, you know, the same benefit that he would. So I want to thank him also for his leadership in making that decision. And something that is becoming increasingly apparent to me, both in the previous study session and in reflecting upon this resolution and Mr. Skregg's performance evaluation, we talk a lot in our organization about rightsizing. And generally, that means cutting back, reassignment, staff taking on more responsibility. But I hope that as we work on strategic planning in the months ahead and as our organization moves forward, we also take the time to acknowledge that right, sometimes rightsizing means admitting that maybe we need more help in a certain area. And sometimes those areas are very easy to see when it's not having parks mode consistently over the summer. And sometimes it's things that are more difficult to see when it's like in Development Services or the city manager's office. And we're trying to get a lot of initiatives done with not a lot of staff. So hopefully, that's a conversation we can continue into 2021 and beyond about what rightsizing within our organization truly means. But anyway, off the soapbox, here's Resolution Number 21-7934. A resolution concluding the 2020 evaluation of the city manager's performance. Be it resolved by the governing body of the city of Salina, Kansas, whereas the governing body has completed its 2020 performance evaluation for City Manager Michael D. Skregg. And whereas the year 2020 presented unparalleled challenges for the city of Salina and its citizens, from the human and financial toll of a deadly pandemic to long-deferred community conversations about race and policing. And whereas Michael D. Skregg demonstrated dedicated service to the city of Salina by ensuring that city employees were kept whole financially while protecting the city's financial position during COVID-19, facilitating the development of a new citizen review board for the Salina Police Department, concluding settlement negotiations with the United States government for shilling Air Force Base groundwater remediation, working with Celine County to finalize the Expo Center lease and a new emergency radio communication system, and coordinating incentive packages to secure major business expansions for Shawn's global supply chain and Great Plains manufacturing. And whereas such service and dedication to his job and the interests of the city of Salina are worthy of public recognition, even while Mr. Skregg declined to accept a raise or a bonus. So now therefore, be it resolved by the governing body of the city of Salina, Kansas, Section 1, that an official expression of gratitude and appreciation should be extended to Michael D. Skregg for his dedication and faithful service for the city of Salina, Kansas during challenging times. Section 2, that the city clerk is hereby directed to have this resolution delivered to Michael D. Skregg, adopted by the Board of Commissioners and signed this first day of February 2021. Michael L. Hopick, 2020 Mayor, and Melissa Rose Hodges, 2021 Mayor. Commissioner Hopick directed the evaluation process and did a great job. And I think we're set up for consistent evaluations in the future. And then the final thing I'd like to note is Mr. Bangston noted that it is Happy Birthday Salina Day, or at least Happy Birthday Salina City Manager Day, because 100 years ago today, the citizens of Salina, Kansas voted to adopt the city manager form of government. So it's appropriate that we're recognizing Mr. Skregg today as well as celebrating 100 years of professional city management. And with that, I'm done talking. Is there, is there anyone else that has anything to add?
Commissioner Hopick here. Again, I think you said it very well. We were fortunate to have Mr. Skregg as our leader during 2020. And the city financially is much better off than we were to start, which I'm not sure how many other communities, not only the state of Kansas, but around the United States can say that. So thank you. Thanks not only to Mike, but for, to the staff for their work during a trying time. And with that, I would move that we approve item 6.2 being Resolution Number 21-7934.
We have a motion and a second to accept Resolution Number 21-7934. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hopick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. That motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much, Mr. Skregg.
If I may, I thank you. I appreciate it. I'm honored to serve. And none of what you described happened on, I didn't do any of that alone, which in part is one of the reasons that I declined a raise or a bonus, recognizing that there are a ton of people in this organization that helped contribute to that success. And this is, this is my 2020 evaluation. None of those employees were eligible for a merit increase because of our budget. And so didn't think it was appropriate for me to be treated any differently. The other thing that I think today might actually highlight just a little bit in terms of how our organization steps up. For those that aren't aware, the Deputy City Manager, Jacob Wood, was serving as our host for these Zoom meetings. He's deployed for Army Reserve Training, so Lauren Driscoll stepped up. Well, then she has a meaty presentation to make today, so Brad Anderson steps up. Our city clerk position, the city clerk took another opportunity in the organization. Glad to keep her in the organization. So the Deputy City Clerk steps up. Well, she's out sick today, so Debbie Pack steps up. It's just an example of how we function. And as we went through this year, we certainly put in a lot more hours than a typical year and everybody in their function pulled in the same direction without questioning it. They saw the need for the organization. They saw the need for the community. And I'm just thankful that, to be able to lead the organization that we do have. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Skregg. With that, we'll move on to item 7.1.
Item 7.1, second reading, ordinance number 21-11050, amending the future land use map of the Salina, Kansas Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use designation of property located on Cortland Circle, south of Shilling Road and west of South Ohio Street, from future employment to future neighborhood center and amending the text of the narrative describing the neighborhood center land use category of the Salina Comprehensive Plan to add C5 and PC5 to the list of potential zoning districts under the neighborhood center land use category.
Thank you, Mayor Hodges. Ordinance Number 21-11050 was passed on first reading on January 25, 2021. Since that time, no comments have been received. Do any commissioners have questions or comments about this item? Are there any members of the public who would like to speak? And we'll give this a few seconds. Actually, not see, I don't, I think there's maybe only one or two citizens on. With that, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Commissioner Hopick here. I move that we approve on second reading, ordinance number 21-11050.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
We have a motion and a second to pass ordinance number 21-11050 on second reading. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hopick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. That motion passes 5-0.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Item 7.2.
Item 7.2, second reading, ordinance number 21-11051, changing the zoning district classification from PC6, planned heavy commercial, to PC5, planned service commercial for the property that is legally described as lots 1 through 5, Block 4, and lots 1 through 4, Block 5 in the corrective plat of Liberty Edition Number 2, in addition to the city of Salina, Celine County, Kansas.
Ordinance Number 21-11051 was passed on first reading on January 25, 2021. Since that time, no comments have been received. Are there any comments or questions from the commission? Any comments or questions from the public? I'm assuming that's, that's no.
Seeing any indication of interest from the public to speak on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. With that, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Commissioner Ryan, Mayor, I move we approve on second reading, ordinance number 21-11051.
We have a motion and a second to pass ordinance number 21-11051 on second reading. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hopick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. Which takes us to item 7.3.
Item 7.3, Resolution Number 21-7935, authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease with the Celine County Fair Association.
Mr. Skregg?
Yes, Mike Skregg here. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I am confident that you are well aware that our lease with Celine County for the rodeo arena and grounds expired at the end of 2020. That was the result of the negotiated arrangement for renewable lease. With that expiration, responsibility for those grounds reverted back to the city. We had previously discussed that. And you, as a governing body, had indicated that you did not wish to assume responsibility for improving the buildings and site for the continued use as a rodeo grounds. In fact, we discussed the likely possibility that we would be financially responsible for demolition and site, just grading in preparation to return that to a greenfield site if nothing else. Along that same timeline, as we were negotiating with Celine County, we were approached by a group of volunteers calling themselves Salina Net Generations, indicating an interest to redevelop that site, as well as the Kenwood Pool Site into a tennis complex. And those discussions are ongoing. And then as the lease was transitioned, the Celine County Fair Association reached out and inquired about the possibility of leasing the rodeo arena and grounds. And that intervening time, recognizing that there was kind of a short-term transition possible and recognizing the city's intent to ultimately clear the site. And so staff has been actively negotiating a short-term lease with a representative of the Celine County Fair Association to transfer full responsibility and liability to the Fair Association, acknowledging the city's intent to demolish the structures and clear the site, and then also balancing the timing of the fair for 2021 and the possibility that Salina Net Generations will be back to you and would like to proceed as early as yet this year. So then, as all that kind of transitioned, we also had more recent inquiries from citizens about whether the city would entertain continuing using the location as a dog park. Celine County had operated it as a dog park while it was under their lease. That discontinued when the lease expired. That discontinued when the lease expired. And so I communicated with the individual citizens that have inquired that the staff's recommendation prior to that inquiry was, and it continues to be, that we enter into a... First and foremost, we enter into a lease with the Saline County Fair Association that fully transfers responsibility for the facility, that a hybrid use involving multiple parties and differing uses and scheduling would not only represent some liability, but would just be impractical. And so the lease that's before you defers to the Saline County Fair Association in terms of them having discretion to operate it as a dog park if they so choose. The lease has been negotiated with the Fair Association. They've confirmed it acceptable, and it does provide that they can sublease the facilities for other... And this is wording that we came up with trying to identify that, just reinforce the temporary nature of all this. So they can sublease it for other one-time, non-repetitive uses conducted by the Fair Association or its subleases prior to the 2021 fair. And then I would note that Equafest has inquired of me directly, and I've referred them to the representative of the Fair Association on the possibility of using the facility for their event in March. With respect to finances and costs, there's no direct fiscal expense to the city as it relates to this lease item. We have had conversations previously about the estimated cost of demolishing the rodeo arena and accessory structures, and that estimate is $75,000. And then the estimate for the Kenwood Pool Site, for the pool, not necessarily the pool building, is an additional $106,000. Those costs are not attributable to acting on this lease, nor are they directly attributable to the proposed tennis complex. Those are... Assuming that neither one of those happened, and we accepted responsibility for those, those would be independent costs that we would have to address at some point. With respect to your possible actions, we have identified the typical lineup of approval, amending, postponing, or taking no action, which would result in denial. I do want to acknowledge that Mayor Hodges pointed out this morning, rightfully so, that the way that the lease is currently written, it's not entirely clear about the Fair Association's discretion with respect to being able to operate it as a dog park. And as I've said, this is all set up to defer to the Fair Association. I don't want to convey their intent in any way other than the fact that they acknowledged it and said they'd take it under advisement. But the two proposed amendments that would clarify that are within the recitals. Recital D, the insertion of a new letter C that reads "Continued Use of the Arena Stage Area as a Dog Park at the Discretion of the SCFA", and then renumbering what was C to D and would continue to read[772.96][773.12]"Removal of the Saline County Fair Association's Personal Property from their arena facilities after the 2021 fair." And additionally, Section 4.1 authorized uses would need the same amendment. Insertion of a new C to read "Continued Use of the Arena Stage Area as a Dog Park at the Discretion of the SCFA", and then relettering C to D and it continuing to read "Removal of the Personal Property and Dirt Owned by the SCFA from the arena facilities after the 2021 fair." So staff's recommendation would be that you enter in, that you approve the lease with the proposed amendments that I just described. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Davis, one question. If for whatever reason the tennis project were to proceed much sooner than expected, is there a minimum amount of notification that has to be given to the Fair Board that could be terminated early?
Well, actually, we discussed that with representatives of Salina Net Generation. And we... The conversation we had was we could proceed with demolition of the pool site, the Kenwood Pool Site. And so it seemed likely that even if we were able to get things moving, we could phase the work in such a way that they could be working at the pool site while the fair is going on, and then they could transition to the rodeo grounds once the fair is completed and moved out. So I have to commend Salina Net Generations. They've been eminently reasonable in all these conversations and were helpful in finding a balance.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there anyone from the public who has a question or a comment about the lease?
Mayor Hodges, I'm not seeing any indication of people wanting to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. With that, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Davis, one other question. If this is approved, is there going to be a way to reach the Fair Board for citizens to inquire of them about using the area as a dog park?
Yes. Well, I've had that conversation with the representative. I don't want to prematurely offer up someone and have them be inundated, but I'll coordinate with them in terms of point of contact, and I have maintained the contact information for the citizens that reached out to me, so I can relay that directly to them.
Okay, thank you.
That's... Mayor Hodges, that's perfect. That would be good information for them to have. Anyone else?
Ready for a motion?
Anybody want to take a stab at this with the amendments?
Commissioner Hopik here. I move that we approve Resolution Number 21-7935 with the previously mentioned amendments.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 21-7935 with amendments as presented by City Manager Mike Skragg. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. We tracked that. We're doing the roll call again.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hopik?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. That motion passes 5-0. Before we go into executive session, does any commissioner have another item to be addressed under other business? All right. Hearing none, we have a request for an executive session. And Mr. Skragg, you thought it would be about 45 minutes?
That is my best guess. I always am reluctant to guess long and have too much time, but I think 45 minutes is my best guess.
All right, thank you.
Getting better. That's exactly what I thought you were going to say. I started even penciling it in. Mayor, I move the city commission recess into executive session for 45 minutes to discuss with legal counsel the subject of legal considerations relating to defense of the case of William Shepherd and Cornerstone Development Group, LLC versus City of Salina and City of Salina Planning Commission based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2. The open meeting will resume via the same Zoom link and the City of Salina YouTube channel at 5:30 PM.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recess into executive session for 45 minutes, resuming at... I'm sorry, did you say 5:30?
5:30.
5:30. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hopik?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. We will adjourn into our break room, and we will resume the meeting in this Zoom location at 5:30.
And Mayor Hodges, Mike Skragg here. You have a couple of housekeeping items. For those that are... The public that are on the call, you need to do nothing. You can put, and we'll return. If you... We should lose you, or you should lose us for some reason. We're using the same link, so you can just log back into the same link. And then for the host that's facilitating this breakout session, obviously, it will be all the commissioners, myself, Greg Bankston, the city attorney, Jake Peterson, also with Clark Meis in Linville, Lauren Driscoll, and Dean Andrew, if he's on the line as support staff. So five commissioners, two attorneys, two staff, and a city manager.
I've got that, Mike. Lauren, I may need a hand here. I'm not seeing the button to create the breakout room anymore. I pulled down on all of the menu items, and that option is no longer there. So give me just a second, and you'll get an invitation to come into that room.
We have one more minute.
Talked until 5:30 and we're back. We're back live resuming our meeting. There was a note that possible action was to follow after the executive session. There is no action that will be taken at tonight's meeting. And with that, I guess I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Hoppeck, here we adjourn.
Second. Commissioner Ryan.
Motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. And I can do the roll call on this because it's the last one and I don't want to make Debbie do it. Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppeck.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
And myself. Aye. Motion passes 5-0 and we will see you on the 8th of February next week. Thank you.
Bye all. Have a good week.
You too.